Councilman Doperty?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapulik?
Yes.
President Randall Sharp?
Yes.
2012-118, apply for grant by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. This will allow the police department through the bar chief to apply for the Jack Grant which goes to the Department of Justice, Justice Assistance Grant. The amount of money that would be coming into the borough to assist us would be fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
End of ten motion, please.
So.
Questions on the motion? Hearing not called, please.
Councilman Bomber?
Yes.
Councilman Doperty?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapulik?
Yes.
President Randall Sharp?
Yes.
Next up, Resolution 2012-118, point you to the zoning board.
Mr. Mayor, the borough clerk received a letter from a resident Kathy Fitzpatrick who has expressed an interest in serving the community by being a member of the zoning board. It's one of the benefits we have here in town, people wanting to come forward and serve. And this would be an appointment on today's date, April 11, 2012, until September 31, 2015.
End of ten motion, please.
So.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Bomber?
Yes.
Councilman Doperty?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapulik?
Yes.
President Randall Sharp?
Yes.
Next up, Resolution 2012-120, tax premium to the treasurer.
Mr. Redd, this is a resolution that will allow an un-redeemed tax certificate to revert to the treasurer. It is in the agreement amount of ten thousand one hundred dollars. It is a foreclosure. It appears to be a proper amount of time, five years, and the statute has allowed to allow that premium to pay to the treasurer.
Okay, end of ten motion, please.
So.
Chair.
Questions? Not at all, please.
Councilman Bomber?
Yes.
Councilman Doperty?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapulik?
Yes.
President Randall Sharp?
Yes.
Resolution 2012-121, refund of the bond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would allow the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to be refunded to William Mitchell on World One Columbia Avenue. Mr. Mitchell had posted a cash bond for curving its sidewalks. And it appears that the borough's engineer, environmental resolutions, has in fact inspected and deemed the work satisfactory and recommended that the bond be refunded to Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, end of ten motion, please.
So.
Second. Questions on the motion? Hearing not called, please.
Councilman Bomber?
Yes.
Councilman Doperty?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapulik?
Yes.
President Randall Sharp?
Yes.
Next up, Resolution 2012-122, Harbor Day, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a recognition of a national, really should be a national holiday, which is celebrated here in the borough. April 27, 2012. We're very fortunate plus to have a number of trees in the community. They do add to the beauty of the community. So this is a resolution supporting national, national opportunity.
Okay, end of ten motion, please.
So.
So.
All are favorable?
Aye.
Vote, attention. Hearing not motion passed. At this time, I'd like to have our department report. Councilman Chapulik?
All right, on the library, books and video circulation, nine hundred and seventy-one, computer usage, fourteen hundred and forty-nine, new members, fifty-one. And copies added in the month for ninety-three, books, magazines, and DVD. And the public book is just running normally. Everything is go placid over there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Sharp?
Uh, yes. It's okay. Police department, I actually have a meeting with the chief. Well, we have to schedule it, but we are meeting next week to go over some departmental. I wouldn't really call them issues, more like challenges and goals for the department based upon the presentation that he made to the public safety department. So we'll be meeting next week to go over those things. I think you all got a copy of the report, the chief's report that Debbie sent it out. You should, Justin, you were copying it. I'm sure you had it.
I don't, I might have got it. I just don't remember getting it.
Okay.
Was it emailed?
It was emailed. Everybody was copying it.
From the chief?
From Deborah Jackson, our district school board.
The reports are always in the folder.
Right.
On the council folder?
That's where all the reports are.
In the month of all departments.
It's in your folder, too. That's what you just said. So, but the calls were about thirteen hundred for the, and some change for the month. Which I guess is up slightly, but for the time of year is kind of normal for the amount of calls. You all, thank you for the Jack Grant. Hopefully we'll be one of the boroughs that are selected for that. Our media department, we had a meeting scheduled with the school board last Friday. However, a couple members couldn't come that were key. Debbie got stuck here having to finish up some work. And the Comcast person couldn't make it. So I decided to cancel the meeting and reschedule it. The school's on break this week, so we will be rescheduling probably after next week. And it's just our annual meeting to go over the programming for Channel 192. Any changes that Comcast has made in terms of what's permissible, what's not permissible, and any ideas that we have that we're stationing in the future. Financing, we all know about the budget. And Jordan had been rolling, her grandmother passed away, and she's also on vacation. So she asked that she, after the budget was passed, if she could, could leave. And there it is. That's my thing.
Councilman Bomber?
Planning board, there is an organization trying to open a store, restaurant in town called Herbalife. They've been before the board twice. They're going to have to return one more time because their architect did not detect a problem with the site plan inordinate. A variance is required, and they failed to notify the residents within the proper area. So they are due to come back next week. If all the paperwork that was turned in today, that complies with the requirement. Environmental commission last night, I got the answer from the engineer on the streetscape on Berlin Road. And the federal government did request a minor change. That change does not have to be approved by the county. Environmental resolutions has submitted that change or in compliance with the change. We should be getting the other day very shortly.
Change to the planning, the?
It was minor, minor technicality that they wanted addressed, and environmental resolutions took care of that. But it doesn't have to be approved again by the county or anyone else. Unfortunately, bad news, I have two resignations on the environmental commission. Both worked exceptionally well, committee members. And I regret having to accept one lady's resignation last evening, but she has recently moved out of town due to the loss of her job. And under the old ordinance, it was not required that you be a resident applicable to be on the environmental commission. But under the new ordinance that we just adopted on April the 4th, you have to be resident. So we're, we're losing that, that individual. The second resignation, we took a vote last night, the board took a vote and denied accepting that resignation. And we're trying to convince this individual to remain on the board.
I'm sure, so what's next? You go out and the last hour, half an hour, one meeting starts, I don't remember.
You have the chief pick her up.
So that, that's all I have on the environmental plan.
Okay, Councilman Jackson?
Not much since I've been away slightly, but I invited Roger to come out as he indicated would come up once a month to the mayor council and answer any questions if there may be some sort of public or else. So there you go.
Well, I do have something that now that Roger's here. If you remember the meeting, I think it was one of the main meetings in March. It may have been the latter part of March that received the letter from the gentleman from Timber Creek, I mean Georgetown, town of Minneapolis. And there were several components to the letter. One dealt with the speed limits that the people were driving. Another one dealt with the, the maintenance of the streets and etcetera. Well, I spoke to Chief Brennan today, and he sent some officers out there for a couple of days with a radar gun. Got no speeding violations while he was out there. As a matter of fact, he said if they were speeding around that curb, they would end up off the road. It's just impossible to go that fast. And due to the maintenance of the roads, it's kind of hard to go that fast in there. So the speeding part of it, we kind of closed the chapter on that. There was, there were no violations found on that on those particular days that they were out here. But then we spoke about the maintenance of the streets out there. And he said they are in pretty bad shape. Probably due, as the governor pointed out, to the delivery trucks and things that go through there to make deliveries. So I know that there was an issue or some talk that the streets belong to the University of Miami. And so I guess we need to find out who exactly owns the streets and if there's anything we can do to get them to make some repairs down.
Roger did go out there a few days after the letter came in these committee committees.
I didn't find any open potholes. There've been a lot of fill-ups because of that. It makes the road rough. The, I went around the other side to see where the lady lived to call it in. Unfortunately, she did close to a speed bump. So the complaint of hearing trucks and rattle in her house has to do with the speed bump. Not so much the potholes.
So. Do we have an ordinance in place about taking speed bumps out?
We don't know.
Those are private.
If I respect the ones in Arborwood, we do. Because we have to take, remember, we had, we did the ordinance to remove all the speed bumps because of?
The emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles. They did that upon the request of the fire department. I don't think we had a party to do it because those streets aren't dedicated either. I'm not aware of the ordinance if there is one, but we'd have to research it and I don't know how. Since it is a private road, it told us it's a private road. I don't know.
If I'm not mistaken, we didn't an ordinance.
But can't they decide to, I mean, the streets are that bad. We can't, there's nothing we can do in a code, in terms of codes to go in there and tell them, look, you need to?
Well, mainly the ordinance just addresses the potholes. They are addressing them, but unfortunately then you get an excess amount of tar or whatever. And then you start getting a rough road. You try to address the road, I don't really know how far it's going to get. So they are maintaining the potholes.
Now, does the University of Miami own those streets?
I don't know. I have to check on that.
I'm curi-, could you find out?
Yes.
I'm curious to find out if they really do own the streets in here. Because that would be very unusual.
Streets?
And something about, I know it's a portion. I remember it coming up a couple of years ago with them. It was something about a portion of that. And I remember the University of Miami, but I thought that they had given it back or something. But I'd be interested to know whether or not they still own it or not.
I just remember they put the speed bumps in in Arborwood. And we did an ordinance regards with the police department to remove them. And we were able to go in and cite vehicles in the apartment complexes. But they had to remove the speed bumps. And I, I've got to find this. Debbie, would you keep making notes so we can find this one before I leave?
I'll check with the chief, too, to see if he's aware of it.
Because otherwise, they wouldn't be able to go in there and give the speed difference.
There's no speed bumps in there now.
In Georgetown.
Well, I know. They took them all out of the, all the other apartment complexes. That's why I'm wondering why they're still in Georgetown. If they had to remove them to be able to summons or, you know, use the police department in there. Where's 309? Yeah, I have to, I, I.
Anything happening with 309 East Elm, does Ford 12 East Elm?
309, he didn't respond to the original letters. He got summons. He was supposed to, he did come to coordinate Wednesday, but he applied for a public defender. He did qualify for, they postponed the hearing date to May 2nd.
What was the complaint?
For the rubbish for not cleaning up the yard, the carpets in the yard and all the others. So he's been in. Ford 12's been cited for the debris in the yard and the basketball equipment in the street. That went out this week.
What, in seven days? You gave him seven days or four twelve?
No, he, I had to start a new, because I'm new here, I can talk to the prosecutor, I had to do a new violation.
So five days.
He's got seven days. He's got ten days.
Well, the law says seven.
Okay, why give him ten?
And then, after ten days?
Then it'll be summons if he doesn't comply.
Anybody else have any questions? Give anything else for us?
No, very busy.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is that it, Senator? Um, Chris?
Councilman Doperty?
School's very quiet now. The law will need to break for the week. And summer, or the spring sports will be starting up. Tracking baseball, we have a good track team. And really, it's been pretty quiet down there. As you all know, about the solar system starting. It'll be starting till the schools close. We start doing solar panels and, and completed by October. And if you figure this age, almost two million dollars. It's great, it's forty-three thousand dollars a year.
That's it, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. The only thing I have is the information we talked about briefly last week, on the April 2nd to June 22nd. Atco is stalling some utility poles. New Jersey Transit will be diverting trains from Lindenwall to Philadelphia. They'll be taking buses and his bus schedule moves and stuff here.
Do you know where the poles are located?
They're, no, they're on, I believe it's on Atco property. And you.
I understand it's a note, but we're probably going to find them.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of.
No, this is probably, it's, it's, actually, it looks like here it's going to be closer to Cherry Island stop. It's just the amount of the route. And then the other thing which we talked about was the South Jersey Gas is starting reconstruction in mid-April. But a pipeline going down the middle of the White Horse Pike, Phase 1 will be from Atco to Berlin. And then Phase 2 will be from Berlin to Lindenwall. It's supposed to be completed by September of 2012. Any information backfinders if anybody needs to see it? And that's it for me. Next up, county program for cats. Has everybody had a chance to read this woman's letter in person?
Yeah, and you know what? As a person that deals with a lot of feral cats in our neighborhood, I don't know if it's the woods or whatever it is. But I mean, they lay on your car, they lay on your steps, they use your, your, your shrubs and stuff as litter boxes around and things. I mean, it's, it really is an issue. It really is. And I mean, I like cats, just like the ni-, the next person. I've even fed a few that looked like they were on their last leg. I felt so sorry. She made a point. I mean, a couple of them looked like they were starving to death. And you know, I fed them. And then the little girl next door told me she found it in the bushes dead a couple of days later. So they are suffering. And if, if no one feeds, and then if you feed them, you get the problem of having twenty more of them show up because that's how cats are. They're like a little herd. They bring more of them. So it is an issue. And I don't know whether it's an issue all throughout town, but I know down where we live, there's a lot of wild cats. Like I said, I think the woods attract them, you know, because of the mice and the field mouse.
We have them over at 10th Avenue, too.
You have a lot, too?
Yeah.
And I mean, the land on the car and stuff, that's just going too far. And I'm arguing with a cat to get off my car in the morning when I'm leaving out to go to work. And now, so I think that, that, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't see any reduction in the population of cats.
Well, this, just to.
Can buy it all.
Just to bring up to speed on, on the county program. The county program is what they do is they, they're going to start capturing cats. I, I believe they've already started this. They take them in, they neuter them, then they release them back to where they're counted. And it's supposed to diminish the population of cats because, you know, they won't be able to reproduce. What her complaint is here is that she's saying that they're going to have quality of life issue because of the fact that they're being neutered. And I'm, I'm, the impression I got from her letter is that she's against the being neutered part. Well, she, she also indicates that supposedly statistics indicate somewhere around two years or less because of the quality of life. They die.
They die. Yeah, well, that's what, yeah, that's the point I got from it, that, that it's a suffering that, that's involved in it. Because they're not being cared for.
Right. Between the lines, I think she'd probably be in favor of euthanizing.
She meant to that.
Well, she did. She said in some cases, she said, send them to the adoption center. And in, and in some cases, I guess, depending upon the health of the cat or whatever to euthanize. I mean, I'm not all into that part of it, that I haven't gone that far with it. But there is an issue with wild cats in this town. I mean, there's a lot of.
It's, it's a county-wide problem. It's not just here. It's, it's a major problem throughout the county. I've worked in Lakeland. I, I, they talked about this issue, and that's the only thing they came up with at the time on how to try and curb the problem. Animal rights activists are all in favor of this, too, as the two people I talked to anyway, that were animal rights activists.
Well, according to her letter, there's quite a few that are opposed to the procedure that's going on right now. He is being one of them.
What, the capture neuter?
Yeah.
Well, capture neuter, release.
Then we need to release.
My, my recommendation in this, and my thinking in this is that this is a county issue. And that I think this should address this to the freeholders and, and, you know, because they're in charge of the trapping and releasing anyway. They're in charge of the animal control.
Is this based on a complaint that they have come out and captured, or they're just going from the neighborhoods, whatever, wild cats they see? Like, how does this work?
Call up and play.
So it's based on a complaint?
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't call a cat. And I mean, even though I don't like them sitting on my car, I probably wouldn't call them. I would come and get them. Based on that, I'm just having them sit on my car.
I believe, I, I think about it in the mornings when I come outside and I, I get that smell.
Wow.
Jelly, I know you can make a couple extra bucks.
Does anybody, does anybody have any recommendations on this?
What?
Any recommendations?
Is it up to us?
I, I mean, how do you, we, we want to respond to her. I mean, I, I'd like to respond to her. Was there another proposal of someone else or some other organization that could address this issue? I think there was someone else in here or a situation? It, there's, you know, a couple of websites she's put on here to go and to, to check for more information. But other than that, I mean, it's pretty much, they don't want us to be in favor of it. And, you know, it's only, we're part of the animal.
I don't think it was us.
On the ads, 10th Avenue, it's definitely a real problem.
You have a lot of feral cats here, too?
Yeah. Yeah. And I had a problem on the hood. Yeah. And I went in out there, you can see the little paw prints.
Yeah, the paw prints.
Yeah.
I mean, I even had a repairman that worked down in my crawl space. And he came back upstairs and he said, have you been looking for your cat? I said, I don't own a cat. And he said, oh, there's a cat down, down in the crawl space. So I mean, they just take over. And then once they, once they start to, to, you know, do their business in certain places, it's kind of marked. And then, and then they're just, they're just there, I guess, you know?
And they were storing their car in the winter time and have one warm up from the engine?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, when you have guests at your house, that's when it's bad. They come out and there's a cat sitting on top of your, your car because the hood's warm and stuff like that. Everybody doesn't want a cat sitting on top of your car. And with the claws and the scratching and all of that.
Due to our limited resources, I would think that your suggestion about the county should fall into place here. Because that's why we go up to shelter down there. So I would, I would address the lady's attention to the county.
So if she could, if, if she calls, someone calls, are they going to kind of remove the cat?
They will trap.
Yeah, they will trap them.
Oh, yeah. Boy, they're going to bring it right back to the same spot that they kicked it off from. If I'm bringing it right back to 51 Avenue.
This is, this is on the letter that, that the county was, was looking into other options. So whatever options the county comes up with, that's the way it's going to go because they supersede us.
Try that from the.
They're supposed to, but I've got, I've got a bit of this. You should see the old, old jelly.
Cats all over the place. Well, they, you know, they mate, that's for, that's for sure.
No, they don't. Cats are all.
No, but you know, I mean, you know, cats, that's their nature. They, they have a lot of.
All right. Anything else ready for the order? Council have anything else to work on?
Newsletter in a couple of weeks.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to, the meeting of the public, questions and comments. Public, please come forward, sign your name, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, John Schmidt, Thompson County, Gloucester City, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt, what was your address again?
Captain Leslie.
Sir, I do.
One West Thompson Avenue, Gloucester City, New Jersey.
One West Thompson Avenue. Thank you very much.
On your TNR discussion, I actually, for two years was involved with the committee offshoot of the World Health of Gloucester City. When I started one there, I actually started what we call a federal E-LINE committee. And it was a group of people. We identified areas in town where there were hotspots of feral cats. And what we did was we actually had the city clarify, it's going to traps. And the animal shelter does low-cost stay neutered once a month, which they did as of two years ago. And what they do, we bring trapped and neutered cameras, we put up two days. What the shelter does, they tip their ears so they, they melt. And then we're releasing that. And it actually has reduced some of the population effectively. It was, it was secondary, it was down, even the smell went down, especially in the summertime. It is, it is a unique thing, but the conversation is interesting that we will find help with similar issue.
And so you said you would need to send right back to the same spot they got over?
Well, since we were kind of, maybe what we would do is we would set up traps. We bought, the city put up a given amount, that's a donation, bought, this would be like thirty traps. Storeman, public works department would get them. Whenever they were doing a low-cost stay neutered, the city, it was like twenty-five hundred dollar budget per year. So everyone, like, if they from weather and if to November, we would say, okay, we go out, put the traps out. We got places for people, okay, there's hotspots, getting help, getting this money, whatever. Go a little bit in there, go out, travel, spend, you know, Friday evening, maybe every hour drive around, take a truck, make a pact. And the next morning, drive down to the shelter, shelter the halls, come back out, pick them up, and care for them for a week. And it was successful for me from the time to date.
That's pretty much what I, I know is.
There's usually animal people that, you know, and just maybe citizens who can't stand the smell. Yeah, you know what? I'll donate a few hours of my time to help reduce the problem. It's a humane way. You know, you're not doing anything harmful with cats. You're not allowing them to reproduce. So.
Yeah, thank you. First thing, we mentioned.
I have two questions. I have to bring up citizens and those members of the public to talk. I gave everyone a letter regarding the Oprah form. And I received a response to it from the power legal in the office, your solicitor, stating that if you, if the form was legal, what they're going to do is supply, they're going to deny our request. They're going to spell out, you know, what your rights are to appeal. I would also think that should actually become part of your Oprah form and not just an agenda. Only because even if the request is fulfilled, the person may feel like, well, you know what, it wasn't fulfilled totally. Or if redactions are made and no reason is given, they have a right to appeal. So the information, I think, should always be given, not just if the request is denied at a state, in the correspondence with the power legal. I think it should become part of the overall form. So if you could look into that, I would appreciate it. My second question or issue is I reviewed the five, the five most recent resolutions for the government body to enter into executive session. And to the two occasions, it was stated that they're entering into legal matters and personnel matters. I actually spent three hours of my Monday morning, Easter Monday, Monday off with a few lawyers. One of them being the prosecutor, one of them being their school board attorney, actually, one of them about Lindenwall Board of Education. Toward Long, Jack Kennedy, Lynn Wood, and both of them are from their office. What I do sometimes is if a law firm or group of lawyers represents a lot of clients, and I had had previous interaction with a municipality or agency, I'll go and say, well, we corrected here, but not everywhere else. So they just said, why don't we come down and fix it? And a lot of times, if Lindenwall Board of Education, local tier, they would say legal issues, personnel issues. And one of them, that used to be acceptable under Oprah. However, with the court rules, rule, a lot of court rules, you got to be more specific. So when we go into executive session, legal matters, you got to be specific. What's the case? Is it ongoing lawsuit? Is it potential litigation? You should try to say something. For instance, Lindenwall Board of Education has been going into executive recently for a potential legal matter that could be screened which, Board of Education. That is spelled out within their, within the minutes, not the resolution. They're going to spell out within their resolution. Don't deal with personnel matters, very broad term, you know, personnel matter dealing with disinteraction with employees. Don't think of personnel matters, very broad term, you know, personnel matter dealing with disciplinary action with employees in the Department of Public Works. So the public has, you know, okay, this is what the topic is being discussed, disciplinary matter within the Department of Public Works, as to the circumstances, as to what employee is being discussed, the public doesn't know that. And so if they at least get the general idea of the specific.